This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Finance Committee meeting of May 11th, 2022. Time is 5:00 p.m. I'm Tom Peake, the interim chair, I guess, while Dan Rest is away on a fun vacation. So, yeah. Could I? Connie, did you get a chance to, sorry, Councilor Denham, did you get a chance to approve the, or to review the minutes from our last meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 27th. Well, I guess I got a second to that, too. Okay, motion is second. Or we can just vote aye. We don't have to roll call anymore. That's gonna take me a minute to get over, but it's very nice. Okay. So, no mayor, so no mayor communication. Any public speak? Anyone from, doesn't look like anyone from the public's here. Okay. So, new business, we are going to skip to the DPW ones first. And the first one that I see there.
It's just one that legal adds.
Is that, yeah, okay, cool. All right, let's.
Mine also is about a minute and a half.
It's their budget, so.
All right, so the first thing on our agenda then is an interdepartmental transfer of $1,500 for city council legal advertising.
So, I gave you a spreadsheet where the money's gone this year. And there's been a ton of supplemental appropriations. The last legal ad bill that had the three zoning amendments plus like 10 appropriations was $467. I mean, I really thought that when we went for 2,000, that would be like more than enough. But as you can see, when you've just signed a legal ad bill today, and then we have the one for next week, that's on 103, or $279 for the one that, for next week's meeting. So, we've still got, we don't have a lot left. We've just got June, but we will have to pay the July legal ads soon. We only have $103 left, so.
Sounds like we gotta.
That's what the story is on that one.
And are you, are you voting tonight? Is that how this is working with?
I vote if you guys have a tie.
Great.
I'll break the tie.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve an interdepartmental transfer of $1,500 for FY22 city council legal advertising.
Second.
Second. Okay. So, all in favor? Aye. Pass two to zero. I'm doing this. Okay, so you're all set. Okay, I believe the first public works one is $49,800 to fund design service for upgrades to Liberty Street pump station. Floor's yours.
Just been working with mayor's office to mine shovel ready projects as infrastructure money continues to come out of the state and federal government. One of the, one of our priority efforts is addressing sizing Liberty Street pump station. It was designed to take flow from a lot of factories and both factories in Liberty Street and they've all since closed. It's really only collecting a small amount resident, mostly residential flow at this point. We can do a value design, whether we can build a new station in the existing building or we just go to like a submersible, any grounds, build a station and deal with some potential contamination issues that may have happened in the existing station.
Interesting.
It's just consult services to help direction we take that project.
Okay, great. That seems sensible to me. Any questions from anybody else?
I just have a question about how much, what is the balance of the enterprise retained fund, if you know?
Right about 1.7.
1.7 now? After this or?
After this will be like 1.65.
You know, I actually do have a question, but if this is a longer conversation and you have to run, like, it's not an urgent question. But I've noticed we spend a lot of money on design work.
Yes.
And I'm wondering, would there ever be a situation where it would be practical to hire some folks and bring some of that in-house? It just seems like it's a huge part of our expenses when it comes to this time of year is funding, like, a lot of design work.
So, we have two civil engineers on staff.
Okay.
However, these projects get complex, have different complexities where some of the design work we need to do for the wastewater treatment plant might require an electrical engineer or an chemical engineer. So, unfortunately, it's hard to have that exact person on our staff. So, consulting services, you know, really come into play, just with the specialty staff.
Right, we can't have some. Yeah, that makes sense. Just felt like I should ask. Okay, I will take a motion to approve $49,800 to fund design services for upgrades to the Liberty Street pump station. Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, cool. The next one is $15,000 for tree work, the removal of seven trees and.
Do you wanna say something, Hadel?
Yeah, just wanted to confirm that the routine earning after this appropriation being 1.8 million.
1.8?
Yeah.
Okay.
Big picture, 1.8, $52,000.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, so $15,000 for tree work.
So, our, our tree warden budget is very reactionary, is about $25,000 for tree warden services for the entire fiscal year. We have been hit with some wind events around the city, significantly last fall, some this spring, and they've led to issues with foliage trees that need to be dealt with, some trees on city property. So, we're trying to take a more proactive approach to some of the decaying trees we have around town that are really presenting havoc. So, just the list that I have of reboils and trimmings is all work that the tree warden has to set in a uniform sooner rather than later, so just trying to get us caught up a little bit.
So, these aren't, this isn't related to the trees on Union Street?
No, they're entirely separate.
Wind relates.
Mostly wind damage or just trees that have really reached the end of their life. Being next to the public way can be a very challenging area for a tree to survive and thrive in, so.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. All right, any questions, councilors? All right. I'll take a motion to approve $15,000 supplemental appropriation for $15,000 for tree work, removal of seven trees and the trimming of eight trees. Recommend that to the full council.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. And then I see we've got $93,500 for snow and ice deficit.
Yep. So, every year we, we deficit spend our snow and ice account and replenish it once we close out the snow and ice services for this fiscal year. We did that last one. The deficit this year is $93,500. We was right around $94,500 last year.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds familiar. Councilor Denham, are you familiar with this, this whole process? So, this is like one of the only accounts that we are able to deficit spend on is snow and ice removal. So, the way the city usually does it, and just for the benefit of anyone watching, the way the city usually does it is to basically appropriate nothing or next to nothing to that account, deficit spend it, and then, you know, once, then, then, then cover it with free cash at the end of the fiscal year because, you know, it's New England and there's really no telling how much, like, budgeting for that is kind of impossible. Okay, so.
I would like to add one more thing.
Yes?
That if we don't cover this, this needs to be raised on the tax rate gap.
Right, so no one wants that.
Yep. Can you repeat that? That way Connie can hear you.
Yes. We do this so we don't have to raise this tax rate gap as a department tells us.
Thank you, Hadel.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will take a motion to approve $93,500 for FY22 snow and ice deficit and recommend that to the full council.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right. We've got $40,000 to cover fuel costs for remainder of FY22. I think probably most of us understand more or less how this came to pass.
One, one important thing is it's not just the DPW. That's, that's the gas that goes in police cars, diesel fuel for the fire trucks, colored vehicles for the school department, it's heat for this building, heat for Center Pep and Naval Schools. There's heating bills for the older schools that have been higher this year due to the amount of fresh air they're bringing in from that COVID.
Right. Geez, yeah.
That coupled with everything else we're not in the world, the city's feeling, we all are.
Right. What are you gonna do?
Yeah, so for clarification, the fuel, we're not just talking about gas for the cars, we're talking about heating oil.
Heating oil, diesel fuel and gas.
Okay.
Okay, great. And since President Gomez asked it earlier, where are we on free cash right now? I guess that's a Hadel. Yes.
Hadel, do you know the balance for the free cash after the appropriations?
After all of these appropriations, we'll be at $986,000.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to recommend supplemental appropriation for $40,000 to cover, cover fuel costs for the remainder of FY22.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Looks like we've got $4,000 to cover trash removal and pickup for the remainder of FY22.
So, a few reasons we have a shortfall in budget for trash and recycling. Historically, the schools were not charged for pickup of their recycling.
I remember that.
Do so wasn't business, they, they got sold. Now, they charge us for recycling pickup. Plus, there's been additional pickups at the elementary schools as they are big leading mountains.
That makes enough sense.
I was, I was on the question. Isn't a particular reason why we are paying for the 2,000 for the school and not them from their own budget?
Might be better answered by Hadel, we charge it, it gets charged back to the school department.
Okay. Hadel, do you hear my question?
Yeah, can you repeat that?
Yes, for the trash, why we paying that, we doing this appropriation instead of the school department paying for their, from their budget?
Yeah, so the particular requirement is the city contract, which is the whole.
Okay.
So, we'll be doing the, we pay and add up the city budget. But at the end of the day, it gets calculated under men's schools, men's schools spending.
Okay.
So, does that money then go to free cash? If you pay it back?
That is just a calculation which we do of what they ask us and from the budget. So, let's say a school is asking for 17 million dollars for budget. Yeah, that's what's going to be calculation on the basis of our payment, that's out 1 million. Big picture, we are contributing 18 million. We don't get charged for those services, only for the calculation. And that's how this works, too.
Right. Yeah, and that's school spending. I'm starting to grasp these concepts. Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion for, to recommend supplemental appropriation for $4,000 to cover trash removal and pickup for the remainder of FY22 to the full council.
Second.
Second. Aye. And I think that's it for, is that it?
That's it for DPO.
Okay, well, go take care of your kids.
Very much.
6:15. Wednesday. For the year.
Yes, next week.
Okay. We have non-municipal guests here, so I want to honor their time and turn to the supplemental appropriation for 156,000, $130 from CPA funds for housing sustainability and financial literacy program.
Before Alexis can tell you more about the program itself, I'd just like to say that the CPA committee voted in favor of this six to zero. There were three members absent from the committee on the night of vote, which is why it's not a nine zero vote. And Alexis Breitner is the executive director of Valley City Council. Can you explain what the program is doing?
Sure. And the one other thing to note is that we do have a letter of support also for the partnership. At least embedded by those two committees. So, this is an 18-month program that will start once we receive funding. And it'll do two things. One is provide up to three people with a $25,000 mortgage subsidy to purchase in East Hampton. And we serve folks up to 80% of the area median income with that purchase. This, of course, is dependent, as Jamie reminded me, of, you know, people actually being able to find affordable, decent housing to live in.
I was gonna ask about that.
So, we have a similar program right now that we're running in Amherst that we've run for 18 months, and we have, we've had one buyer, and we have three subsidies. And this woman is just getting close to possibly purchasing. So, sometimes they can take a long time. Obviously, as you know, CPA funding, we only invoice for what we spend. So, if we're not able to use this, if we're not able to find homes for these folks, we might ask to roll it over or we might do a second application in the future. But so that's, that's the mortgage subsidy side. And coupled with that, beyond those three people, is an 18-month-long financial literacy piece, which will help people be, get ready to become home buyers. So, we have at Valley Community Development, a woman on staff who has 20-plus years of doing financial literacy, first-time home buying, post-purchase counseling and foreclosure prevention. She's very well-known in the valley. She worked for Wayfinders before she came to Valley Community Development. So, she really helps people get ready to become home buyers. And then, once they've purchased the house, make sure that they know how much money to set aside so they can fix the gutters or fix the roof. And if they run into challenges, she's there to help them, prevent them from losing their house. So, this funding would help pay for her salary to do that outreach with folks that live or are considering moving to East Hampton.
Okay, great.
I'd like to just add the, the need for this also within the city. We're doing a lot of projects that have had impact for, we did the emergency rental assistance program. We're looking towards building new housing units. And this sort of covers a middle gap of services for existing homeowners. If you're, you know, in, in struggling with your, your payments and are in risk of foreclosure, this program will also help do foreclosure prevention work with those residents. And like Alexis said, it'll, it'll provide some subsidies and counseling education for first-time home buyers who are looking to purchase in East Hampton.
Sounds really interesting. Any questions?
So, this is, it's an 18-month program, but it can roll over if that's the role.
It's up to you guys.
Okay, great. If there's no other questions, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to recommend supplemental appropriation for 156,130 from CPA funds for housing sustainability and financial literacy program. Recommend that recommendation to the full council. Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for being here.
Jamie, thank you. I hope you get your question.
Thank you.
Cool.
So, next week will be, this will be public hearing.
Yes, Wednesday 6:15.
Yes.
And that can be remote or?
Yeah, yeah, that one could be, yeah. We're gonna have a link at the, at the agenda, you can share with her, so.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to the $27,467 for FY22 IT department payroll?
Hadel, do you know anything about that?
Yes. So, that appropriation was going on with, the original plan was just put it from ARPA. First time that the appropriation went to the council, we were hoping to cover a majority from ARPA, but that is not possible, Hadel's stuff. So, we decided to cut that previously, and now we want to fund it because there is not enough money. And last year, we didn't budget on, the whole budget was unknown, therefore, there wasn't enough money for current. Again, the last position was not funding either.
Okay. I mean, this is a difficult time for IT people, and I can understand how it would be easy for something like that to fall a little bit short. So, does anyone have any questions about that?
So, this money is being transferred out of free cash?
Yep.
Yes. So, it's kind of saving as a deficit from, I mean, the department of T. Last year, as I said, that budget was, that budget was done, we didn't know what the future of IT department is going to be. And we did best guess. At that point, the last position was not to unfund any either.
That makes sense. Okay. Well, I will entertain a motion to recommend $27,467.23 for FY22 IT department payroll to the full council. Second. All in favor? Aye. And this is super easy because every single one of these, like, things has the same, anyway. Okay. Let's talk about Teslas.
If I may, Cassie, our conservation agent, wanted me to call her, put her on speakerphone because she wanted to talk about the grant.
Sure.
Start. Hi, Cassie, Bob Elberti, how are you?
Hi, Bob, good, thanks for having me.
Good, I have you on speakerphone with the city councilors.
Hi, everyone, thanks for letting me answer this way. Sorry to be there and present.
Hi, Cassie, how you doing?
Good, thanks. Can I hear you okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make myself available. Do you have any questions about specifically the Tesla that the appropriation is for? I was responsible for writing the grant that goes towards the money of that.
Do you want to speak, do you want to speak to the grant now, Cassie?
Sure, yeah, I can do that. So, the grant in its entirety was for two Tesla Model Y's. And basically, the way the grant is set up is that you can get $7,500 put towards each vehicle. So, the grant was awarded for a total of $15,000, and that's $7,500 towards each Tesla. And then, one of the Teslas is going to be partially funded through this appropriation. And they're going to be replacing two vehicles in the, in the police fleet. And then, I'm trying to think what else is good information. That's pretty much the entirety of the grant, but I can get into any specifics if you guys would like.
That makes sense, and I appreciate, I definitely appreciate both of you for going after these grants. You know, we, the council for many years has been asking departments to green their fleets, and so I always appreciate that. I think the only concern that I have on this one, and I, it could be that I'm just out of the loop on this, but I know that historically Teslas have been very expensive to main, like, to repair. Like, I, I know that people, you know, like, even relatively small cosmetic damages just because of like the sort of unique business model have been kind of expensive. I was just wondering if that's something that you'd looked into at all?
Essentially, the research that we've done is, when they first came out, for sure. But now, they're saying there's little to no maintenance. They've gotten to the point now where there's little to no maintenance, the battery life of 300,000 to 500,000 miles with no maintenance.
Right.
So, what we, the research that we've done shows that they're basically telling us, change the tires is going to be the most amount of maintenance that you're gonna have.
So, I have a couple questions. So, the first question is, let's say something happens, the vehicle is totaled. Does that mean insurance replaces the whole thing, or does that mean that we have to?
No, no, our insurance covers the replacement cost. Which is the exact same thing with the Ford's now. Unfortunately, it's happened.
Yeah.
So, we've gone down that road.
Yep. And I have a.
Yeah, nobody's got hurt.
Yeah, that's great. I have an iPhone, and like, every three years, there's a new cord that comes and you have to, you know, this is obsolete, etc. So, we're spending a lot of money on the charging system. Is that something that changes over time? Is that gonna become obsolete? And I don't know if Teslas kind of.
No, my, my understanding is they've had the same charging stations for all of their cars forever. That's my understanding. They haven't, they don't, like you, to your point with the iPhone, they have, they don't, they don't upgrade them like that, it'd be a huge cost.
Oh, I guess, yeah. I saw that.
Yeah, no.
And then.
Go.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to add specifically about the charging element. There's a number of adapters that can be purchased. So, it sounds like if there were changes, it might not be a huge, you know, financial cost to just buy an adapter that maybe needed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then, my, my last question was, I've been kind of reading some articles, and there's some police stations that have gotten them, and then there's police stations who have decided not to get them. And in part, I went to your awards, some awards gathering, and, you know, you're, you're not small people, right? You're, you're, right?
With the gear up.
With the gear, right? And one of the complaints from people who have purchased and decided not to was they just said, it's not fit, like, we can't, the, the space inside the Tesla Y is uncomfortable, not very spacious. And they are, some of them just said, I don't know if this is the right time for us. And then, another police station said that there's a lot more car companies that are kind of on the verge of putting some things out there that may be more spacious, may be able to accommodate the police officers are, are not tiny people, right? And the, the back for people who are big transport is a bit more, you know, spacious. Sometimes those are the smallest of people, I hear that right? And so, just curious about, is this the right fit for us kind of right now? Or is it something that we can, you know, green them a little bit later when something is more, it looks more efficient, right? In terms of not the electricity aspect, but just the nature of use and the vehicle.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, when we, we first went from the Crown Vics to the Interceptor SUVs, we heard the same arguments. And, and some of my police officers who were very large were complaining that they weren't the Crown Vics. But once they started driving them, they adapted. And I have, I absolutely have small statured police officers and several females as well. So, some of the police departments that I know that went the Ford electric route with the Mustang, they're much, much smaller, and they don't have the storage capacity that the Teslas do. So, I don't foresee that being an issue for us at all. Even, the storage is really unique because they're stored both in the front and in the rear, where right now, we only have the rear, and it's like very small in the back. rear, where right now we only have the rear and it's like very small in the back of the Ford. So we're looking forward to the storage that's in the Teslas. But as far as like apartment with the room, I really don't see it being an issue. I really don't. And one of these cars is going to be specific for traffic and my traffic officer's not a big guy. So it's going to be fine. But again, it's something new, so, you know, and cops hate change and cops hate the way things are.
Sure.
But they'll, they'll adapt and they'll be fine. And the reality is, to your point with transportation, if there was, if one of these Tesla patrol vehicles is going to make an arrest, they will just call one of another, mark cruiser down with a cage to come and transport. So that's not, that's not an issue either.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
I was kind of, I was just gonna say, I was kind of wondering how, how that would happen.
And we do that now, so if my detective's making arrests and they, like, one of my detectives drives a Ford sedan with no, nothing in the back, he'll just, he'll call a line cruiser to come down, one of the patrol officers to come down and transport from the scene to the local area. We do it all the time. If I arrested somebody, I don't have a cage in my car, I would call somebody to come. If I pull somebody over, they'll be coming anyway to the chief, you know? But no, that's, that's very common. We commonly have another cruiser come down and transport. And particularly if it's a car stop and the arresting officer has to wait for a tow, somebody's got to go transport the rest of you back to the station anyway. Because they're not going to wait for the tow truck to get there and transport, so. But that's, that's essentially, I mean, I have some bullet points I could throw out if you'd like. So some of the research that we've done, depending, so the Teslas, 69,000 done. The Ford SUVs are 58. Go ahead.
Before you keep going, talking, talking about the Teslas, the grant is to buy EV vehicles. Not particularly have to be Teslas or the grant is writing to buy a Tesla?
Cassie?
Yeah, so the grant was written to purchase the Teslas.
Oh, the Teslas?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's required to specify.
Okay.
The Tesla vehicle that we're going to get.
All right, I just want to be sure the, the grant was specific, specifically for Teslas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not, not as far as I'll actually back up. So you'll, you'll notice on appropriation, we're only asking for appropriation for one of the vehicles. So the mayor and I had spoken, she had asked me if I would purchase one of the other Tesla out of our federal drug forfeiture. So that's why there isn't appropriation for two of the vehicles. So we're buying one through the appropriation and one through our general, our forfeiture account. So the difference essentially is about $11,000 between the Ford and the Tesla. And by all accounts, everything that we've done research on, just the, just the fuel savings on one of these in a four-year period will be over $12,000.
Just on one?
Just on one. The fuel, Ford fuel and maintenance costs, they have per mile at almost 19 cents a mile. The Tesla's fuel and maintenance cost is at .029 cents a mile. So that's, that's a significant difference and it could be anywhere for $20,000 for the Ford versus $3,000 for the Tesla. And then, of course, the EV emissions will avoid 23 tons of CO2 a year, which is about $8,700 in environmental and health costs savings. And I already talked about the battery life, it's anywhere for 300,000 to 500,000 miles. Cassie covered the grant. So essentially, a rate, an average life of a Ford that we have right now is about 100, five years, about 105,000 miles. I had DPW was good enough to give me, you know, fuel costs and we have three line cars right now that are 106,000, 112,000, 143,000 miles. And these cars, we're limping them at this point and they're out of powertrain warranty as well, so, which is why we try to replace a cruiser every, every year so we don't get into this flux that we're in right now. But just the, the fuel savings over a two-year period, over a two-year period, six of my line cruisers are averaging 1,500 gallons of fuel. So we're gonna, we're gonna save a ton of money on, on fuel and, and maintenance costs, which would quickly, I was talking to Council Gomez earlier, the cost difference between the Ford and the Tesla, we're being told you could make it up between six and 18 months. Really depends on what, what you're replacing. So in our case, $10,000, $11,000 will be closer, you know, if we're spending $12,000 for four years for one on fuel, that $10,000 will be made, made up in, in short order.
So I, I mean, I like the sound of that, I like the numbers. I guess, to go back to my initial question, how do the police cruisers get like maintained? Do we do that in-house or do we go outside to a mechanic?
DPW, DPW.
DPW, okay. So I'm fine with this. I, I've heard there's some people who have some consternation about the brand, but I, if you've done your research and this is what you want, you know, I, I'm okay with that. But one thing, if, if you're okay with this, I wouldn't mind if I could just get an email from the folks in, in the motor pool, just saying that they don't think that the, you know, given that there's going to be, you know, these cars are going to go around, they might, you know, chances they could potentially unfortunately get into a fender bender now and then whatever, that there's not going to be some sort of outsized maintenance different, like cost in, like differential in maintenance costs? I just saying this is, this might be kind of silly, but like, you know, a few years back, I knew a guy, a consultant in my field who had a Tesla, who just got like, you know, someone opened their door too hard, put a big dent in his door. And the cost to repair just that dent was outrageous. But of course, he was going to Tesla to do it, you know? Provided that they feel comfortable, that they can take care of all of that stuff day to day.
Well, I, I, to that point, Nikki Dees does all of our bodywork and he does a great job for us and he really, really takes care of us. So for like any bodywork on these vehicles, I don't foresee that being an issue.
Okay.
Either.
Yeah, there's just one thing I just felt I needed to check on because of.
Yeah, and I, I can, I can talk to the, the DPW folks. But like they, they change our tires, they change the oil, they, you know, they'll do, you know, loop oil and filters for our cars and stuff like that. But there's not going to be a need for, you know, the loop oil filter. Essentially, they're going to change tires.
Right.
So I'm not sure, like, I can ask them to send an email about what they would do for maintenance, but essentially it's going to be the tires.
If that's all they're doing, then I guess, I guess then the bodywork would be the real concern.
Right.
If it's going to get handled, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, he takes, he does all of our cruiser work now. He does, he doesn't, like I said, he does fantastic work and, and he really, really takes care of us.
So I have another question. So you said the, the Fords, they have like 100,000 miles right now. So what is your goal for the life of these Teslas? Are we still talking 100,000 miles? Because I know that there is.
By, by, by all of our research, they could go for 15 years. So our goal would be to keep them as long as we, as long as we can. They're, they're definitely, like, I need to, I need to, I try to cycle a cruiser a year, you know, a regular Ford Interceptor a year, because they only, once you do 100,000 miles, and remember these cruisers are 24/7, 365, they run round the clock constantly. You know, we mix them up as best we can on patrols. But, you know, these cars are out there all the time. So, and, and, you know, the Teslas aren't at the point now where there's a cage in the back, by way of example. So, you know, our intent is to, you know, continue with the line cars in the Fords and augment when we can, like we're doing right now with Teslas in special purpose vehicles.
So you're not looking at like next year, you take another one out and it's a Tesla that we fill it with?
No, my, no, my goal, I don't envision unless Tesla starts making a police interceptor, like Ford, specific Ford. I don't, I don't foresee a world where we have a fleet entire Tesla. I don't foresee a world that we have a, I foresee a world where, where a fleet that we're going to save money in, in special purpose vehicles by going electric. And one of the other concerns that we had initially early on was the crash rating is a Ford Interceptor's crash rating of 70 miles an hour in the rear. And the Teslas are, they're five-star crash rating, so the equivalent of Ford. Because that was obviously a big concern about if we were going to get go-electric or what we're going to buy. The safeties of the officers, obviously, paramount. But we're, we're in a good place with, with where we are right now with Teslas in my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions?
And you said that we, that you were replacing two cars? Which cars?
Car five, which has.
It's a cruiser?
Yeah, that one has 143,000 miles on it and.
Both are cruisers?
Yep. And car one, which is 98,000 miles.
And you don't have any idea what we're going to do with it?
Cassie, do you want to speak to the grant?
Yeah, so my understanding is that the, the two vehicles we replaced were going to be sold and, and, you know, not part of the fleet anymore. And I spoke with Mike Owens about that, he was thinking potentially NHQ, if I, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. But Cassie, they, the grant won't allow for us to repurpose those vehicles, right?
Uh, I think not.
Yeah.
The way we.
Different than what we've done.
Yeah, the way it's written in there is that we're going to be replaced. And so, you know, it's two great communities, the goal is to try to reduce the, the car emissions and use of, of these fossil fuels.
Okay.
Great question.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll entertain a motion to recommend $89,864 for purchase of one Tesla Cruiser, equipment and two EV charging stations to the full council.
You give me the motion, you don't have to vote.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, but I oppose, abstain.
I'm going to abstain here right now. I'm just struggling on many personal levels with this.
Ooh, yes.
Motion, okay. Okay. Oh, one, two, yes. Okay. I believe the last thing. Thanks. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Cassie.
What are you asking for?
Thank you, Cassie.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Yeah, have a nice night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam D.
Yep, I think here, impeccable timing. Okay. Our next one, item is $148,000 for fire and ambulance expenses, personnel costs and equipment. So this is like kind of a package of a bunch of stuff. Do you want to just walk us through it?
Yeah. When we were here back in January for the first transfer this fiscal year, we had anticipated coming back one more time, clean out the end of the year funds. And with that, since that time in January, we had a number of other things occur. Most notably, we had Greg Gag, the reimbursement year firefighter retire. And what that did was that trips and contractual obligations for buyouts, in particular with sick leave and then also vacation time. So there's two items on there that we'll call out for those contractual obligations for his buyouts. And then the other one that we talked about back in January was overtime. We purposely did not ask for any overtime back in January, just to see how far it could get into the fiscal year and get a more accurate number. So that number on overtime will get us into the fiscal year in June. And then the other one that you'll see is for EMS supplies and EMS overtime. Again, when we were here back in January, we were looking at getting those funded through the COVID reimbursement. That has not happened and is anticipated not to happen before the end of the fiscal year. So that money should be coming back, but it'll go to the general fund at a later time.
Okay. So that's the, the supplies and what was the other one that you?
The EMS overtime.
The EMS overtime, okay. Yeah, I've heard that there's some.
This delay is a reversal, but not only, you stand for multiple communities across the state.
From the, from the state and federal government, really?
Right.
Could you? Unthinkable, all right. So okay, I mean, the, the retirement that happens, the other thing, you know, these other things, you know, I'm glad that we'll get reimbursed for some of these. You know, I think that the question that sort of comes up, you know, a lot of the time when we're talking about, you know, overtime and whatnot, is whether there is, could be any sort of, you know, alternative, like if there's, if there's any change to the staffing model that could limit the amount of overtime? I know that it's tough with just people and their availability and whatnot, but I just feel like I always need to sort of ask for the benefit of the taxpayers.
Yeah, no, so this request for closing off this fiscal year overtime is a reduction from previous year. And what we did when we traded that training captain position this past July, one of the benefits of that position was utilizing that as a swing position. So when a captain is out on shift, instead of having to replace that shift captain with overtime, re-stable by, when that training captain is in, he slides over, he covers that A shift, saving 10 hours overtime at a time. So we'll have more accurate numbers come June 30th. But as of right now, we're probably saving as close to $15,000 this fiscal year for that one issue.
Great.
I have a couple questions if you have them. I have a couple questions. The first one is the EMS supplies, what supplies we're talking about? And if those supplies that we're talking about, the people pay for it when, when the ambulance get out and we transport or use those supplies? And if the answer is just that money go to the general fund? And the other one is someone is retired, retiring, retiring? And we have the grant that I think is still in place on, on the next year? We have to fill that vacancy and how quick we have to do it? Six months, three months, and how that's going to work?
So to answer your first question with EMS supplies, a lot of them are what they call disposable supplies, things that are used on every day-to-day call, whether it's oxygen supplies, gloves, medications, things of that nature. When we transport a patient, we're able to bill their insurance company, that money then comes into the city, goes into the general fund. Last year, we collected $915,000. When you look back over the last five years, the city averaged around $700,000. This year, we're on pace to collect a little 1.1 million dollars.
And the $22,000 is because it was underfunded and that particular line for the budget was because we're being more busy?
With the supplies?
Yes.
It's based on call volume, but also one of the dramatic impacts COVID-19 had was the cost of supplies. One of the examples I always use is back in 2019, a case of gloves was $67. Now in 2022, that same case of gloves is $267 legitimately. So that has a dramatic impact on the overall supplies and use of the animal.
And the retiree?
The retiree, so we do the safer grant that closes out next March. And then we're in the process of working with civil service to bring on or replace that number of people.
Okay, thank you. All right. I will entertain a motion to recommend 100, the supplemental appropriation of $148,000 for fire and ambulance expenses, personnel costs and equipment to the full council. Second in favor, aye. I think the only thing left that I saw on our agenda is the $137,500 for the CPA, for the ward out. But I think that's just kind of in a holding pattern right now as we're negotiating with the landowner. And without Councilorist here, I don't see any need to discuss our continuing business about the, I mean, I don't think. the, I mean, I don't think, we don't have a quarterly report, and, uh, I know that the review of elected officials' boards and committee stipends is an ongoing thing, but not time-sensitive. So unless there's any objection, I would entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
It's adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Bye. Yes?
Uh, oh, yeah.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.